Good evening, Vern. I'd like to call this meeting to order seven o'clock. And also like to send my deepest condolences to the Bolio family. And the mayor and council wishes to acknowledge that town of Fort Smith is located within the Treaty Territory. The Treaty Territory also combusts of traditional homelands of the Salt River First Nations, the Smith Landing First Nations, and the indigenous Matee people of Fort Smith. These nations have maintained stewardship over their sacred lands throughout the generations. We honor their knowledge, teachings, traditions, and the land. We are we are mindful that colonization hasn't been kind. We respectfully re-recognize our general history, our generational history, and commit to strive for the for the unity of the spirit of truth and reconciliation. There, I said it this way. Having said that, approval agenda?
I move the agenda be adopted as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, any questions? I see none, all in favor? All in favor? Presentation, we have the RCMP here. Thanks.
Good evening. So I'll be presenting the monthly mayor's report for the month of November. We have received 137 calls for the month of November compared to 162 for the same month last year. As always, our three priorities for this fiscal year is road safety, reconciliation, and community engagement, and harm reduction. So first, with the with road safety, we have conducted seven targeted enforcement actions, meaning check stops, either in a set place or roving check stop while we're roving around town. Checked 35 vehicles, which allowed us to arrest and charge two individuals with impaired driving. In addition, we've also arrested a third impaired driver based on a complaint that we received from a community member for a total of three. Several tickets were issued for various things, tickets, speeding, stop signs, no driver's license, no registration, things like that. Regarding reconciliation and community engagement, Brett Kleeman and Alex Ostola are one of our, two of our newest members, have been coaching hockey with the youth. They continue to do that. They will be throughout the hockey season. Jesse Woodward, since he got here, is always volunteering at the animal shelter. I have Brett and Adam also that serve pancakes at the JBT school during the month of November. Regarding harm reduction, on November 1st, we have executed a search warrant and seized five ounces of cocaine and 50 boxes of unstamped tobacco. That specific matter is still under investigation. We just have to do a few more follow-ups. And obviously, if charges can be late, they will be late. Also, during the month of November, we charged a male who was already in custody with possession of cocaine for the purpose of trafficking and for proceeds of crime under $5,000. So the cocaine and the evidence was seized a number of months ago. The moment we lay the charge, a timer starts ticking. We call it the Jordan timer. That's why in some instances, and you may wonder, why hasn't the cops charged this individual with trafficking or possession of cocaine yet? It's because we do all the testing in lab first, analyze the content of their cell phones and whatnot, and only when we have everything ready, that's when we lay the charge. So because of the backlog that the lab has, it takes several months before they get back to us. So you're wasting precious time to prosecute. In this case, we have 18 months to prosecute, so it's just a strategic move that we're doing, which five or six months, this guy was arrested in May. So that gives you an idea of how long it takes to gather all the evidence in these investigations. He's been charged with possession of cocaine for the purpose of trafficking. The proceeds of crime comes with the money that's been seized from him. So if the money comes from the sale of dope, a controlled substance, we seize it, and then there's an additional charge that comes with it. Again, we continue to do our compliance checks on our, some of our repeat and high-risk offenders. And I believe that's the reason why we have a lower number in terms of calls of service compared to the previous month. So that's what we've done for the month of November. That's all I have for you. Subject to your questions.
Any questions? Counselor Grevitt?
Thank you for the presentation. It's really not a question at all. I just want to express as on behalf of council and myself as well is we really appreciate the job that the, our law enforcement are doing in our community to keep for the majority of circumstances, a very safe community and a very good place to live. And that's through the presence of your enforcement efforts and things. So just wanted to say we really appreciate your services and season's greetings.
Anything else? Yeah, just to, I'm going to reinstate that letter I've done before election time on the Missing Persons Act. I'm going to do another letter to that and see what that comes out. The letter, the answer we came, came back with was they couldn't do anything because election's coming up. But I want to keep that movement going there, so. It'll be done probably within the new year or something. So thanks, just an information thing for you. Thanks for joining us and thanks for all your hard work. And be safe out there. Approval of minutes?
I move that the regular meeting, 10-23 of November 21st, 2023 be adopted as presented.
I'll second that.
Any questions raising? Okay, all in favor? Pass to you nicely.
I move special meetings, SP-10-23 of November 24th, 2023 be adopted as presented.
I'll second that.
No questions? All in favor? Pass to you nicely. Business arising from minutes? Counselor Grevitt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few, yeah, two, two notes. The first one is in regards to the minutes of November 21st. First, regular council under section H, which was council business, we put forward a motion 23-292, which was a letter to the community leaders asking if there was, they would be willing to extend support for the New Year's celebrations. And I'm just wondering if we've had any response to that request?
No, we didn't get any response from it.
Okay, thank you. The second one is in regards to the minutes of December 12th, Community Services meeting under item three, which was review section B, where we were asking for the status update on the functional review. Say I, say I was taken aback a bit by the comment that a budget had not been associated with the, the motion back, the motion of May 16th. And that was leading to some further delays in moving this forward. Unable to make a motion to say that we attach a budget to it during this meeting. But I'm just going to request that we get a briefing on the, the status of it and an update on. If you, if you look at the motion that we passed on May 16th, was basically administration be directed to prepare terms of reference for a complete functional review of all programs and operations of the town of Fort Smith, and further that a proposed budget be developed for the functional review and the functional review, la 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 la. And then further on, I believe it was June 6th, we were advised that we would be provided with a plan of how to move this forward. So I'm just wondering if we could have these addressed in a briefing note and brought forward to us for the corporate services meeting in January?
Okay, SEO?
Thank you. The intent is to bring forward a capital plan, which will actually identify all capital projects and give council the opportunity to review all capital projects, of which a functional review is a capital initiative. And it's through the capital plan that council has the ability to actually fund the work because I think as the counselor reiterated, there was no budget tied to the work, just requirement mid-year to do a whole bunch of work in addition to all the work that was approved in the capital plan, but with fewer staff. And so, you know, yeah, this work has not been, not been advanced. I think that there's an opportunity to look at the entire workload placed upon administration when we review all the capital work required of them holistically. So instead of bringing forward capital initiatives, trips and drabs, briefing notes for each one, I would recommend that, you know, we, we save the functional review with all the other plans and studies and capital initiatives required to be prepared by administration for one overarching discussion on the requirements of administration.
Counselor Grevitt?
Yeah. Yeah. Can't say that I'm overly happy with the, the delays in this moving this forward. Must, must pay better attention to minutes and things like that when we do these in, in the future. The only reason I keep pounding on this one is that mayor and council have identified it as a very significant item that we need, that, that needs to be done by the corporation as soon as possible to, to ensure that we're running a well-organized and well, well-funded and well-managed operation. And the delay in this, we were hoping that, that there would be a plan that would be ready for the, for discussion for the next group of people that will put their names forward for mayor and council. And at this point in time, I really don't see that. Unfortunately, I don't see the, that happening within the timeframe that we had originally, initially anticipated that would happen. But the sooner we can start moving forward on this, I would be appreciated. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? See none, all in favor? All in favor, pass to you nicely. Declaration of financial interest? I see none, moving along. Council's business?
I move that the Protective Service Standing Committee minutes of December 5, 2023 be adopted as presented.
I'll second.
Any questions? See none, all in favor? All in favor, pass to you nicely.
I move that DPA-047-23 submitted by Dylan Jones for Home Occupation Business, PKS Limited Reclamation Specialists from Lot 1271, Plan 16791, Bell Rock Way in Fort Smith be approved. I'll second that.
Any questions? See none, all in favor? All in favor, pass to you nicely.
I move that DPA-048-23 submitted by Craig Walsh for Home Occupation Business, the NuFEE Workshop and Online Sales from Lot 25, Block 18, Plan 212, 22 Tarmigan Street in Fort Smith be approved. I'll second that.
Any questions? See none arising, all in favor? All in favor, pass to you nicely.
I move that, that with administration support, council draft a letter of support for a public inquiry into the 2023 wildfire season response efforts with the aim of identifying any inter-agency and intergovernmental operational communication and coordination issues that may have high, that may may have been highlighted by the complex, large-scale, and multi-jurisdictional nature of this wildfire season. This process should be carried out in the spirit of creating forward-looking recommendations that can enhance wildfire prevention, preparedness, response strategies through changes in legislation, policies, or practices to better ensure the protection of communities and natural ecosystems in the North. I'll second.
Any questions? See none, all in favor? Pass to you nicely.
I move that the Corporate Services Standing Committee minutes from December 5, 2023 be adopted as presented.
I'll second that.
Any questions? See none, all in favor? Pass to you nicely.
I move that Counselor Tuckey be appointed to the Post-Secondary Education Committee. I'll second that.
Any questions? See none, all in favor? Pass to you nicely. One abstention.
I vote that Counselor Ferguson be appointed to the NTPC Intervention Committee. I'll second that.
Any questions? See none, all in favor? Pass to you nicely.
I move that the Community Services Standing Committee minutes from December 12th, 2023 be adopted as presented.
I'll second that.
Any questions? See none, all in favor? Pass to you nicely.
I move that the mayor and council accept the Fort Smith Housing Needs Assessment as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, any questions? Yes, SEO?
Thank you. Just one, there's, it's, it's been mentioned, we have received an inquiry from a Mr. Beamish with, you know, requests about how the town could work to support local development. I'm wondering about, I can bring a briefing note to council, but I'm, it would be better informed when we knew the outcomes of our applications for CMHC funding. So the, the approval of the, the housing needs assessment has provided us the final document required to submit for our CMHC funding, the $2.2 million I discussed previously. And so depending on the outcome of that, those funds, those will let us know if we have the ability to afford to develop new subdivisions, for example, or put other pieces of, of the puzzle in place to support housing development. And so our response to Mr. Beamish's inquiry would be better informed once we knew the outcomes of that. So I'm wondering if council would just be good if, if we replied to Mr. Beamish in that manner and postponed our dialogue on the issue until we knew about that. I'm not looking for a vote. I'm just kind of looking for will of council here.
The Beamer?
Thank you. Just if we could at least acknowledge the receipt of his letter, that would be much appreciated. And also, do you know how long it would take for us to hear back on this, if you're aware?
No idea, actually. I suggest it's going to be several months as they sort through probably a lot of applications, calendar year applications.
I was thinking too, during that process, maybe it'd be good if council and the SEO took a good look at some lands in, in town here that we could put in for, like industrial. We don't, we don't have much industrial, right? So I'm looking at that and probably other parcels. Counselor Corbett?
Thank you. Well, I think we, as a organization, mayor and council and SEO included, should be sitting down fairly soon to discuss land development within our community in light of the upcoming work for the community plan and zoning bylaw review. That's, I'm hoping should be happening within the next month or two.
Okay, very well.
I move the Municipal Services Standing Committee minutes from December 12th, 2023 be adopted as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, any questions? See none, all in favor? All in favor, pass to you nicely.
I move that bylaw 1054, Appointment of Bylaw Officer Jamie Short be introduced and given first reading. Whereas the Council of the Municipal Corporation of the Town of Fort Smith in the Northwest Territories has enacted a bylaw to establish the Fort Smith Volunteer Fire Department. And whereas the Fire Prevention Act, RSNWT 1988, establishes the fire chief or acting fire chief as a local assistant to the fire marshal of the Northwest Territories for the purposes of carrying out the provisions of the act within the limits of the municipal corporation. Now, therefore, the Council of the Municipal Corporation of the Town of Fort Smith at a duly assembled meeting acts as follows. Number one, that Jamie Short be appointed fire chief for the town of Fort Smith. Number two, that this appointment shall come into effect upon this bylaw receiving third reading. And number three, that bylaw 1005 be hereby repealed. I'll second that.
Any questions? See none, all in favor? SEO?
Thank you. Just to provide context to mayor and council, the, the current Director of Protective Services, who is also designated as fire chief as per legislation, is taking years' leave without pay. So we are during that time designating a, one of our volunteers who has previously acted as the fire chief. And so we're operating under that mechanism until, until the one-year leave without pay is over. Thank you.
Thanks. Any, any questions on this? I see none, all in favor? Pass to you nicely.
I move that bylaw 1054, Appointment of Fire Chief Jamie Short be given second reading by title only. I'll second.
Any questions? See none, all in favor? Pass to you nicely. Appointments? Don't see any appointments. Mayor and council board representation updates.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to pass my condolences to the Burke and Deserly families for their loss and furthermore condolences to the Bolio family. To take the time to congratulate all the athletes that took part in the Arctic Winter Games trials, and I hear there's some success stories. And it was a very good venture for them all. Noticing that Fort Smith is quite busy these days. It must be the season that's upon us. The senior citizens had a very successful Christmas dinner last week. And my understanding was very well-attended. And in closing, I'd just like to say it's good to see Santa Claus roaming streets of Fort Smith again. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to extend my condolences to all those that have lost loved ones over the last little while. And I know it's a rough time of the year for that to be happening with everybody sort of celebrating for the upcoming festive season. Like to give a big shout out to the Beamishes for organizing, as Counselor Tuckey indicated, the Santa sleigh going about town. It's really great to see that Christmas spirit and legacy of Fort Smith continue. So a big shout out to them for getting it rolling and all the volunteers that are stepped forward to participate in it. Do a few committee updates. The Sustainable Development Advisory Board is supposed to meet this week. There was unable to establish quorum, so that is being rescheduled. The Economic Development Advisory Board is scheduled to meet on December 21st. So with the next corporate services, we should have an update from that. The public, or the Post-Secondary Education Meeting Committee is planning to meet tomorrow. So there'll be updates coming on that. There's one item of significant discussion that will be brought forward. And the NW, the NTPC Intervention Committee met on December 18th. And it was basically for the committee to get an update on the status of the intervention that has been filed on behalf of the town of Fort Smith for the NTC, NTP Power Corporation to take over the franchise and distribute, sale and distribution of power in Hay River. It is felt that the plan as presented by the Power Corp. may have impacts to the residents of Fort Smith. So the town has felt it is absolutely necessary to be intervening in that process to make sure that power is, remains affordable and equitable for our residents. As part of that, there's a public hearing that is scheduled for January 16th, and the town will be making presentations to the, the board that, or the Public Utilities Board. And yeah, and that was about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would like to send my condolences also to the Burke, Dejere Lee family and the Bolio family. And also, congratulations to all the athletes who participated in the AWG trials and wish success to the ones who were successful in going to the AWGs. And I too would like to thank the Beamishes for taking on the initiative of the sleigh and see seeing how excited that the community is of it going now. And also wishing everyone happy and safe holiday.
I'd like to also extend condolences to the Dejere Lee Burke and Bolio families. And congratulations to Anay Aubrey Smith, who was the first recipient of the NTPC bursary of the norm for it's entitled the Norman McBride, if to further her studies, I believe in engineering. I'd like to pass on again, congratulations to Jane Dragon and Richard Van Camp for their induction to the Order of the NWT. Congratulations to our former deputy mayor on his election, but also his selection as Minister of Education, Culture and or Education, Environment and Climate Change, sorry. And also Merry Christmas to everybody and Happy New Year, safe travel season. We had the lighting judging happen, and it was great to see how many different lights are out and about. And the first prize was Paul Clark, second prize was Shirley Toronto, and a third prize tie for Mary Cardinal and JB Wu. Community Services had their elections last month for their group, and it'll be announced in our Community Services package in January. There's lots of things going on for the holiday season, like the Breck Center and the library have many amazing things going on. Lots of Christmas parties out there. It's kind of nice for everybody to be back together again and celebrating. And all the best in the new year.
Thanks. I'd like to send my deepest condolences also to the Burke and Dejere Lee family and the Bolio family. And then I'd like to thank the Conny Bear family for reaching out to us. It's Abby Conny Bear. Me Miska birthday, and she turns 94 tomorrow. And she was born here in Fort Smith. So yeah, I'd like to wish her happy birthday. And to all the youths that took on the sports there, I'd like to thank them. And I think you pretty well all said what I had to say. And I forget what you were saying. So but but thanks. And it's it's so good to hear from the Conny Bear family that, you know, it's that family that who gave this to the people of Fort Smith. And today, like, like 50, 60 years later, we're still in touch with that family. And and their kids are taking it a part of them. And and it was really good feeling. So I'd like to thank thank them. And this year, we have probably lots of work to do with the fire season. Again, we did get some money in, and we'll keep on working through the summer to fire smart our community. And hopefully, it doesn't take off again. I don't I don't think it should. But but thanks anyway. Administration.
Thank you. We have three briefing notes before council. I'll just step back for a second and speak to a couple of issues that came up through this past cycle. Council asked a couple times about the concept of us investing our savings and the ability to return, achieve returns, you know, and the fact that we sometimes have millions of dollars sitting in the bank. I did provide an email to council explaining our position. But, you know, for the sake of of public, public information, right, even though it was provided to to council, I'll restate it for the minutes. Basically, I'm asked for my discussions with you. We have two types of accounts, our checking accounts and our savings accounts. Our checking accounts are the cash is required to be fluid in our funds. And so we can't invest those. Most of the monies that go into our savings accounts are reserves, are capital funds, and most of them are conditional funds, their gas tax, or CPI that have strings attached to them and cannot be invested. We do have the ability to invest our contributions to reserves. When I talk to you about our financial administration bylaw, we put $300,000 a year in, plus any surpluses that sit in our general cash account over a period of time get invested. So we can invest those. But the basic concept there is that it's not our money. So any risks or risky behavior that we might have with our own savings that we could pursue to achieve return, we can't do it because this isn't our money. And our job is just to make sure we don't lose the money and not necessarily to grow it. So we have to be very careful with any investing. We're limited to things like bonds and GICs. And right now, the rate of return we receive with the Bank of Montreal is such that it's almost equivalent to the return we would see from safe investments. But without any of the conditions, the money's not locked in, there's no fees to process it. And so that's the position on if people were wondering about why we don't invest. Another point, there was a counselor asking about adding truth and reconciliation as a governance line item. What we're hoping to do either in January or February is instead bring a truth and reconciliation update to council that talks about our actions to advance the four municipal specific issues and to try and drive home that, you know, we're pretty much at capacity dealing with municipal needs and not expanding our our area focus. Other than that, the website is live. So council may have noticed that. The the NWT Power Corporation Intervention Committee was spoken to. There's a few kind of short notice items there. One is the requirement to have standalone continue to be the the designates by the town. Right now, we're with the position that there's an existing motion that's sufficient, and it should at least be sufficient enough to allow work continue. And if we have to, we can get a recommendation at the council meeting next cycle in advance of the meetings that are happening on the 16th. And other than that, we're having a whole bunch of contract results roll in. We've had three contracts closed for the for the compactor building, for the intake, and for the lagoon. And they're all coming in well over budget. So they're all under review, and we'll be coming back with recommendations and the 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 work to remediate some of the slash piles and whatnot around town is ongoing. You've seen that work happening. So that's a quick administration update. Before council is item 1A. It's a briefing note on appointment of auditors. So we're required, as I have my discussion over the past month, to have our finances audited every year annually. There's an requirement for the appointment of the auditor. Selection process we've used is a is a request for proposals. That process has been gone through. That request for proposals has a mechanism for extension. We're looking to use that mechanism for extension to continue with the auditors for this year. But we do need to get an RFP out. Just time is of the essence. We're going to use an extension at this point if it if it so be. So we has council, and there is a a motion there for council.
I move that the council of town of Fort Smith approve the contract amendment from the incumbent auditor and appoint Avery Cooper and Company Limited as the auditor for the year ended December 31, 2023, and for subsequent years subject to annual review and approval.
I'll second.
Any questions? See none, all in favor? Pass unanimously.
The next brief note before council is with respect to the NWT Association of Communities. It was authored by the executive secretary, who did a great job on it. And if I don't have the answer, she's right behind me, and I'll ask her to speak up. It's actually a three part, perhaps, yeah, three part briefing note. Two of the parts have to do with recommendations. There's a bringing forward of recommendations that had been previously made by council for the the 2023 NWT Association of Communities AGM, which did not occur because Hay River was underwater, if I recall. And so those ones are still on the books. And so it reminds council that those recommendations it brought forward are still on the books. Secondly, it brings forward additional recommendation made by Counselor Covert, or resolution, I should say, I'm calling them recommendations. And so that one is for discussion and approval of council. And finally, it asks for the names of the counselors who wish to attend, and it tries to provide a cost association associated with each counselor attending so that you can make an informed decision when determining who attends. I think that the costs are such that it behooves the town to send a large delegation.
Any questions? Counselor. Pissinger.
Yes, thank you. I don't see my name on the list. Thank you.
So we want to add that name?
I think the names on the list are from 2023. For whatever reason, perhaps Counselor Pissinger wasn't available to attend then. And the other thing is, is that these names were presented directly by by counselors to the executive secretaries for those who had expressed interest. And these this list is not actually council approved. So we are looking for a motion of council supporting the attendance.
Counselor Gubert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll speak to, I guess, the the draft resolution that I propose that we approve and add to the or submit for consideration. This is to deal with a resolution calling for the support of the NWTAC and communities with regards to a public inquiry into the wildfire thing. And this is further to a motion that we passed last month as a mayor and council. And just to reiterate that so far, the hamlet of Enterprise and the Denny First Nation have also support a call for a public inquiry. And there's the petition currently sitting with about 600 signatures on it. So there seems to be support for the for this particular resolution. The other two items that I've suggested were ones that when I was going through the listing of resolutions that NWTAC have, they have reaffirmed in standing resolutions. And the two resolutions were suggested for deletion. And one of them deals with resolution for that was been out for a couple of years, calling for the GNWT to appoint public boards for Aurora College. And secondly, a public board for the NTPC. In the interim, the government has successfully appointed a board for Aurora College. However, the board for the NTPC still remains a board of deputy ministers. So I would like to see us push that that board still be a public board representative of the public by the public and not agents of the GNWT. So I would suggest that when this is discussed at the NWTAC that we say that it should not be deleted, reworded possibly, but not deleted. And the other one is there's a resolution for funding to expand rural and remote stream of reaching home programs. And currently, the wording within the resolution is to address rural and remote communities with a population of over 25,000. And I would like to see the wording change to also to be inclusive, because basically, that excludes every community within the NWT. So I think the wording on that needs to be quite clear and call for the the government to lobby. It's a federal program, I believe, and I think the the GNWT needs to lobby for recognition of all our communities to be eligible for this.
Okay, so we need to vote?
So I move that counselors Ferguson, Coroll, Pissinger, Campbell, Tucky, and Covert, as well as Mayor Daniels, be approved to attend the 2024 NWTAC on February 29 to March 2, 2024 in Hay River. And I would be willing to share a room or a place with one of my female cohorts.
I'll second that.
Okay, any questions? Counselor Gubert.
Yeah, I just would like to bring up on with regards, I was looking at the the budget that was prepared, which was, it's very appreciative of the work put into it. One thing is the budget included full per diems for people attending the conference, which is 100, about $152 per day. I've always been of the in my previous career with the GNWT, always aware that we are expending public funds and have always gone with the thing, if you're going to a conference and they're providing breakfast or lunch, you do not put in per diems for those particular things. If you decide you want to go and eat somewhere else rather than the buffet that's offered, so be it. But it's not on our dime, not on the public dime, it's on your own dime. So there might be, I would like to see us fully practice that. So we can go through the the conference agenda and find out what meals are being offered. And if they're being offered to attendees, then those are not eligible as per diem expenses.
I would agree to that amendment.
I agree to that. And my question is, Counselor Campbell is on the so he should be covered, right, from the NWT Municipal Association?
Okay, all in favor? All in favor, pass unanimously.
I move that Mayor and Council accept new resolution call for a public inquiry, Kikisa Enterprise, Hay River, SS 052 wildfire response, and that the proposed changes to the NWTAC affirmed resolutions and standing resolutions be accepted, and that new resolution and changes to the NWTAC affirmed resolutions and standing resolutions be submitted to the NWTAC for the 2024 NWTAC Annual General Meeting in Hay River on February 29 to March 2, 2024.
I'll second.
All in favor? All in favor, pass unanimously. SEO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the final briefing note that we have before council is the, the SAO, Senior Administrative Officer Employment Bylaw. So in the briefing note, I mentioned that the current bylaw, number 1019, was approved by mayor, mayor and council in 2021. But it was a longer standing document, just seen an update in 2021. Mayor and council had solicited legal counsel in rewriting the bylaw and a draft was just recently received. It was presented to the Human Resources Committee and went to me for, for review. The review is included in this briefing note. And then we've brought it straight to council as time was of the essence because council is in the midst of a, of a staffing exercise to staff the SAO. I list a number of differences between the previous, previous bylaw and this current bylaw. To summarize, what they do is they kind of a tip to scale to the benefits of council. They kind of put all the eggs in your basket, and I think it'll be very difficult to staff to. My recommendation is it goes back to committee for further discussion. And you continue your staffing exercise under the, under the old bylaw. I can, I can talk to specific areas, you know, the highest friction points that I see. We might have to just keep aware that if we get too specific, we might transition from talking about the bylaw to talking about the current staffing exercise that's underway. And that would be subject to moving in camera. So if council wishes to continue this in camera or see where we get as we discuss it, then, then we can, we can do that. And to not send it back to committee, we don't necessarily need a motion. We just need the council to stay muted on it and it'll go back to committee.
I move that we go in cameras per CTV 233 East. Sorry, my mic wasn't working.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? All in favor, Pastor Nelson?